Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Mental Health, Disabilities and Addiction jointly with Higher Education. If you wish to submit testimony, you may at testimony@councilnyc.gov. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. Chairs, we are ready to begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Councilmember Eric Dinowitz, Chair of the Committee on Higher Education. Welcome to our joint hearing with the Committee on Mental Health, Disabilities and Addiction, chaired by my friend Chair Lynda Lee. Today's oversight hearing is titled "Accommodations for College Students with Disabilities." And we'll be focusing a lot of our attention on college students at the City University of New York, since that's the jurisdiction of my committee. However, a bill that I've introduced recently and that we'll be discussing in the hearing, Intro 660, would require the Mayor's Office of People with Disabilities to establish a program to help high school students with disabilities who are graduating in the current school year to obtain accommodations at institutions of higher education, not just at CUNY. As part of such a program, the Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities would develop and implement a system of shared information with institution about students' special education services and would also provide students with student advocates for related supports. We're fortunate today to be joined by the Committee on Mental Health, Disabilities and Addiction and MOPD to discuss this bill and its impact on young New Yorkers and on New York City institutions. Those of you who know me won't be surprised by my bill, which comes from my heart and my experience. If you know me, you know I spent almost 14 years as a public school special education teacher in our high schools. And everything I always said is I would bring their stories and their experiences with me to City Hall. That's 14 years of experiences with students with disabilities in our high schools. And that's exactly what I'm doing with this bill. This bill puts in place the assistance that many of them need to transition smoothly into institutions of higher education and will now help future students get the accommodations and support services they need to excel in college courses and in college life. Unlike K-12 students with disabilities, college students are expected to advocate for themselves, to work with college staff and offices of disability services, to explain what would help them succeed, and to find and submit all of the documentation that's required for getting those services. Making the transition to college is hard enough as it is for students, and making that specific transition is a tall order for a lot of our high school seniors who very much need the support. And I want to make sure that all of our high school seniors with disabilities in New York City have some help in doing that from now on. We look forward to this hearing to learning more about CUNY's programs for meeting the needs of students with disabilities. We will learn about CUNY's outreach procedures for identifying and assisting prospective and newly enrolled students who might be available for accommodations. We'll learn about the kinds of accommodations and other services that CUNY students are provided, including through special programs like CUNY Leads, CUNY Unlimited, and Project Reach. We want to make sure that CUNY's programs are serving all populations of CUNY students equitably, especially students of color, English language learners, and low-income students. We want to hear about the success rates for CUNY students with disabilities, retention, graduation, employment. And finally, we want to identify any gaps in the accommodations and other services available to college students with disabilities in New York City and learn how the council could better support efforts to close those gaps. And what's especially important in this hearing is to explicitly state that not all disabilities are visible. And many times, people from the outside looking into populations of people with disabilities think wheelchair. But it's so much more comprehensive than a physical disability. Many disabilities are invisible. In my career, I've dealt with many students with learning and emotional challenges, speech language, speech needs, other OT needs, other things that are not apparent directly to people who are trying to provide the services in the first place. And it's very important that as we go through this hearing, that we talk about those comprehensively and with the understanding that we cannot always see or know right away, from an outside perspective, who has a disability, who needs an accommodation, and who needs other supports, and the other conversations about universal design and all that. And now, I want to turn it over to Chair Lee to give her opening statement.
Thank you, Chair Dinowitz. And I will keep it brief because a lot of what he said is what I wanted to say as well. But as he mentioned, my name is Lynda Lee, Chair of the Mental Health, Disabilities and Addictions Committee. So I'm very proud to be co-chairing today's hearing with my colleague, as well as being a co-sponsor for Intro 660. My bad. I also want to recognize we have joining with us today our colleagues Councilmember Botcher, as well as Councilmember Abreu, who have joined us. And so thank you both for being here as well. And so as we know, a lot of times, the students that have with disabilities are eligible to receive accommodations and services tailored to their needs according to federal law. But I think the reason why we're here today is because we want to understand what the gaps are, as well as what the challenges are from the transition, from when they're in grade school, growing up into high school, and then transitioning into college. And I think one of the biggest challenges and changes, in terms of my understanding, is that they have to request the accommodations on their own, and it's on the students' responsibilities and on their shoulders to request the accommodations and advocate for themselves. And seeing that we have an amazing institution in our city such as CUNY, and as Chair Dinowitz had mentioned, CUNY Leads, Project Reach, CUNY Unlimited, these are all really great resources. And how do we ensure that the students, number one, are aware of the resources? And then also, how do we help MOPED and other city agencies to plug these students in, since you're sort of the mediating body that deals with this? And so that's why we're here today, to hear about the bill, to help transition. And to be honest, I think for me personally, coming from the nonprofit sector and as a social worker myself, one of the things that I'm really curious to hear about is, honestly speaking from MOPED, as well as from CUNY, what are the challenges? What are the gaps? Because I think oftentimes, as council members, yes, it's our role to legislate, but how do we legislate in a way that has the most impact for students with disabilities? And I'd be really, really curious today to hear all of your thoughts on that and any recommendations that you have, because at the end of the day, we don't want to put policies out there that don't necessarily make sense, which is why we're here today, because we want to hear from you all in terms of what the needs are, whether it be funding or whether it be different policy changes, and to just really hear your thoughts on that. So I really want to thank all of you for being here. And also recognizing all the folks that are here from CUNY. I know you have a whole team here, which you'll be introducing yourselves shortly, as well as Deputy Commissioner, am I right? Okay. And General Counsel, my bad. And from my understanding, I know you guys do a lot with very little in terms of the staffing and everything else, so I really appreciate all the work you guys are doing. So thank you for that. And without further ado, I will hand it back over to Chair Dinowitz.
Thank you, Chair Lee. It's good we do these hearings, we call each other Chair.
Yeah.
So thank you, Chair Lee. I also want to acknowledge and like to thank Adam Starapoli, my Legislative Director, Jenna Klaus, my Chief of Staff, Regina Paul, a committee's Policy Analyst, and Nia Hyatt, the committee's Senior Finance Analyst.
Yeah, because now you're making me look bad, so now I gotta recognize.
I couldn't. If I tried, I couldn't do that.
No, my staff yell at me because they're like, "You don't have to recognize this," but I do think they deserve recognition. So yeah, she's shaking her head. Amanda Vasquez, who's my Chief of Staff, as well as John Wanyi, who's not here, but he is our Policy Legislative Director.
Thank you for embarrassing your staff. So as a reminder, anyone who wishes to testify in person must fill out a witness slip, which is located on the desk of the Sergeant at Arms near the entrance of this room. Please fill out this slip even if you have already registered in advance that you'll be testifying in person today. To allow as many people as possible to testify, testimony will be limited to three minutes per person, whether you are testifying on Zoom or in person. I'm also going to ask my colleagues to limit their questions and comments.
Sorry.
It's all good. It's like a movie, you know?
I want to line this up, trying to get it back up.
Okay, for those of you watching at home, the lights were going, he was turning the lights out and on. So my colleagues will limit their questions to five minutes. And please note that witnesses who are here in person will testify before those who are signed into the Zoom webinar. For our first panel, I would now like to call up from CUNY Dr. Denise Maybank, Vice Chancellor of Student Affairs, Dr. Carrie Shockley, CUNY Director of Disability Services, and Raymond Perez, Director of Accessibility Resource Center at Hostos Community College, and Emily Sweet, from the Mayor's Office of People with Disabilities, which I guess we'll be calling MOPED from now on, the Deputy Commissioner slash General Counsel. Both titles?
Yes.
Two salaries?
Yes.
I tried. All right, please, and in accordance with the rules of the council, I will administer the affirmation to witnesses from the City University of New York and the Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to the council members' questions?
To the evidence.
Thank you. And as a reminder, to all of our witnesses, please state your name prior to the testimony for the record. You may begin.
Is that better? Yes. Okay. Good afternoon. I'm Denise Maybank. You'll hear that again in just a moment. Chairperson Eric Dinowitz, Chairperson Lynda Lee, and members of the Committee on Higher Education and the Committee on Mental Health, Disabilities and Addiction, thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony before you regarding services for students with disabilities at the City University of New York. My name is Denise Maybank, and I am honored to serve as the Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs for the City University of New York. Best position on earth. I value the committee's interest in and focus on the services and care for CUNY students. Your attention to how needs beyond the classroom are addressed is laudable, and we are always appreciative of your partnership that provides support for the amazing students of CUNY. I'm accompanied today by two of our university student disability services experts, those best positioned to respond to your interests and questions. Joining me today are Carrie Shockley, University Director for Disability Programs, and for the campus perspective, Raymond Perez, Director of the Hostos Accessibility Resource Center. You will hear from them regarding specific programs and services made available to our students and the impact of some of those supports on the ultimate success of students with disabilities. As the largest university in the nation, urban university in the nation, the City University of New York is described as a transformative engine of social mobility that is a critical component of the lifeblood of New York City. An integral part of the university's mission is the provision of services necessary to support the accomplishment of the academic goals of each student. CUNY students deserve optimal circumstances in which to attain their goals, and we position to support them in having meaningful and fulfilling experiences. We are committed to our students not merely surviving, but to them thriving through the CUNY experience. During the 2122 academic year, nearly 10,000 students, to be exact, 9,843, registered with the offices of disability services across the university. Each campus has either an office or a staff member designated to assist students seeking services or accommodations to support their successful navigation of the CUNY experience. The top three most frequent identified disabilities are one of those less visible, learning disabilities at 34%, mental health, also less visible, at 21%, and the physical, including mobility-related disabilities, at 16.6%. To whet your appetite, I highlight for you a few of the ways in which CUNY engages with and on behalf of our students with disabilities. Representation and advocacy. Staff and students across the City University of New York actively serve as advocates for students with disabilities, for disability services, and for disability rights. Among those specifically focused on these issues are the CUNY Coalition of Students with Disabilities, known as CCSD, we only use acronyms, and CUNY's Council on Student Disability Issues, or COSD. CCSD is one of the most active and visible student organizations representing students across CUNY. This is an amazing group of student leaders supporting their peers and educating our learning community about not only the needs of students with disabilities, but more importantly, they educate us about the contributions and strengths of our students with disabilities. Shout out to CCSD. COSD is comprised of representatives from each of the campuses. COSD publishes a faculty guide to teaching college students with disabilities to assist faculty in successfully carrying out their central role in relation to the university's commitment to providing access to students with disabilities. In the guide, faculty will find the latest information about various types of disabilities, the functional limitations of students with these disabilities, recommended accommodations, and helpful suggestions on how to successfully meet students' needs in the classroom and other college settings. COSD also supports CUNY Assistive Technology Services, CATS, that team of assistive technology specialists who provide a wide range of support services and tools to CUNY campuses, ensuring consistent and state-of-the-art assistive technology throughout the university. Inclusive and adaptive sports. Established in 2017, inclusive and adaptive sports provides opportunity for students with disabilities to compete in intercollegiate sports. The men's and women's wheelchair basketball teams have competed in the National Wheelchair Basketball Association Championships. This expanded opportunity attracts students to CUNY, offering beyond-the-classroom experiences that round out the total college experience for those with disabilities. Maybe a less considered opportunity, but certainly one that attracts the attention of students with disabilities. Work in neurodiversity. As part of CUNY's leading role in the movement to provide expanded access and services to neurodiverse students on the college campus, the Central Office of Student Affairs Disability Programs hosts the annual CUNY Neurodiversity Conference each year in March. CUNY's two signature neurodiversity initiatives that you'll hear more about, Project Reach and CUNY Unlimited, engage stakeholders to share promising practices for supporting students while they're in college and during transitions to and from campus. The conference attracts an international audience, and throughout the pandemic, had 400-plus virtual participants. In conclusion, our work in disability and accessibility services is not merely about compliance and verification. Our work is about enhancing the lives of students with disabilities academically, personally, and professionally. Our work is about advancing the knowledge and tools that matter for students with disabilities. Our work is about advocating for the policies, practices, and resources that ultimately allow students with disabilities to thrive while attending CUNY and into the future. We believe you can and will partner with us in the work as we go forward and as CUNY helps lift New York and we together keep the possibilities possible for students with disabilities. Now on to the tangible picture from those in the know.
Either microphone is fine.
Thank you. Carrie Shockley, again, I'll say that again. Good afternoon, Chair Dinowitz, and Chair Lee, and members of the New York City Council Joint Committee on Higher Education and Mental Health, Disabilities and Addiction. Thank you so much for inviting us to testify at this afternoon's hearing on accommodations for students with disabilities at CUNY. I'm Carrie Shockley, CUNY's Director for Disability Programs and Director of the John F. Kennedy Jr. Institute. I am proud to testify, along with CUNY's Student Center Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs, Denise Maybank, and my colleague Raymond Perez, Director of the Accessibility Resource Center at Hostos Community College, whose portfolio includes students with disabilities, veterans, and support for CUNY's co-located wheelchair basketball team. We deeply appreciate the opportunity to discuss how students are informed of the accommodations process at CUNY, as well as other initiatives we provide to support them academically, engage them socially, and help them prepare for post-graduation. To connect with people who are considering CUNY, we conduct presentations on programming and services available to students with disabilities several times throughout the year. These presentations are done in collaboration with the CUNY Central Office of Admissions and with external partners that host college fairs specifically focused on people with disabilities. Campus-based disability or accessibility offices also present on behalf of their campus and the university. These information sessions highlight the importance of connecting with the Disability Services Office, how to connect with resources at the campus level, describe differences between an IEP and an accommodation plan, as well as other resources available to students with disabilities. Once on the campus, in orientations across the university, new students are provided with information for the Office of Disability and Accessibility, and again encouraged to register. From the academic side, it is best practice for faculty to include a statement on their syllabus and course sites regarding how to receive reasonable accommodations from the Disability Accessibility Office and how to communicate their plan. Additionally, when faculty observe that a student may need support, they're asked to connect that student with the Disability Office. As a form of self-advocacy and a right to self-disclose, students initiate contact with the Disability Office. Currently, there are nearly 10,000 students who have self-identified and are registered with our disability offices. For those who are registered, demographically speaking, CUNY students with disabilities are 40% male, 60% female, 33% white, 28% Hispanic, 27% black, 12% Asian. In fall 2021, students with disabilities, 84%, were majoring in liberal arts and sciences, health professions and related programs, business management, marketing and related support services, psychology, visual and performing arts, computer and information sciences and support services, social sciences, public administration and social services professions, education, homeland security, law enforcement, firefighting and related protective services, biological and biomedical sciences, and physical sciences. Most frequently registered disability group, repeating, learning disabilities, 34%, mental health, 21%, physical, including mobility, 16.6. Students with disabilities access note-taking, extended time for examinations, quiet room for test-taking, sign language interpreting, captioning, and assistive technology, which includes screen readers and reading and writing software, among other accommodations. CUNY has several initiatives that can support all learners, including those with disabilities. Campus resources such as tutoring and writing centers provide essential supports for all students. CUNY Start, Math Start, and ASAP are models which provide much-needed wraparound support for students. Faculty training in universal design and learning principles and technology that evaluates course sites for accessibility helps support faculty in meeting students' needs. There are several programs that are designed to foster inclusion in campus membership. Project Reach, an acronym for Resources and Education on Autism, as CUNY's hallmark, is a grant-based initiative funded by the FAR Fund. Reach is located at eight campuses and provides no-cost additional layers of support to autistic students to assist them with transition to college life. Programming may include peer mentoring, group and/or individual, transition to college support, coaching services, workshops, and student interest groups. In addition, the Project Reach team hosts its annual neurodiversity conference, where promising practices are shared by faculty, staff, students, and partners, internal and external to CUNY. Through a model called CUNY Unlimited, in partnership with the nonprofit AHRC NYC and our colleagues at the New York City Department of Education, District 75, CUNY has developed an inclusive higher education program that allows students with intellectual disabilities ID to benefit equitably from our university's historic role as an engine of social mobility and independence for New York families. CUNY Unlimited will offer students with ID the opportunity to earn a US DOE-certified meaningful credential, which verifies to employers that these students have achieved core competencies in basic literacy, civic engagement, independent living, and career readiness through their experiences at CUNY. The data indicate that CUNY Unlimited participants are employed at a rate 20% higher within three years of graduation than similarly situated individuals with ID who do not participate in inclusive higher ed. And lastly, to prepare for employment, since 2008, CUNY Leads, linking employment, academic, and disability services, has helped CUNY students with disabilities gain the confidence and skills to achieve successful academic and career outcomes, both during and after graduation, during college and after graduation. Leads advisors are located on each undergraduate campus, CUNY campus, to provide individualized career guidance and resources for students preparing to enter the workforce. In addition to employment readiness support, there is a monthly online learning community in which partnering employers, including nonprofit organizations, private companies, and public agencies, share employment opportunities and pathways to employment. Guest speakers and invited guests present initiatives focused on hiring people with disabilities. There are also Leads job developers who recruit employers and communicate opportunities to students. We recently implemented a student career management system, and we'll have more data on internship and job types, interview, and placement in the coming months. To support the current student population with more comprehensive services, there are a number of obstacles which must be overcome. For students with physical disabilities, many are challenged by inaccessible spaces. More upgraded campus spaces are necessary to meet all the students' needs academically, socially, and physically. Disability Services offices across the university report that they are under-resourced. We often encounter adult learners who have never received an evaluation or have documents that are quite out of date and cannot afford a new one. An investment in professionals, possibly at CUNY, who could provide low-cost or no-cost services would be one way to address this. Project Reach has been grant-funded for more than 10 years. Over the past four years, our neurodiverse population has increased by at least 50%. As our neurodiverse population increases steadily, we are unable to take this support model to scale across the university. An additional $100,000 would fund an additional three to five micro projects and increase program capacity by 75%. CUNY Unlimited has four unfunded DOE D75 models, which leaves these programs in a delicate position on the partnering campuses. To expand CUNY Unlimited programs for our students with intellectual disabilities in all five boroughs, the cost of this CUNY DOE initiative would be less than $1 million annually. A pilot project at two campuses for $250,000 would formalize the credential and open opportunities for academic, social, and vocational experiences. We are grateful to New York State for providing designated resources for students with disabilities. Additional assistance from our city partners would be greatly appreciated and help us provide more services to our students. For the campus perspective, I would like to introduce my colleague Raymond Perez, Director of Accessibility Resource Center at Hostos Community College. Thank you for your commitment to access and opportunity for CUNY students with disabilities.
Thank you very much. I'd also like to note that we've been joined by Councilmember Caban.
Raymond Perez, good afternoon, Chair Dinowitz, Chair Lee, and members of the Committee on Higher Education and Mental Health, Disabilities and Addiction. My name is Raymond Perez, and I have worked at CUNY for 17 years, where disability service has always been part of my portfolio. I personally have the honor of serving as the Director of Disability Services at Hostos Community College for the past eight years, where I provide accommodations for over 600 students with disabilities on a given academic students with disabilities on a given academic year. Students with disabilities represent 10% to 12% of the overall enrollment at Hostos. This wasn't always the case. I am here today to share what Hostos and CUNY have done to become a prime destination for students with disabilities, seeking to begin their college careers, and how they are made aware of services we provide at CUNY. The formula I will describe has led an increase in enrollment of 287% at its first year of implementation at Hostos. The journey begins with creating a marketing and recruiting plan, specifically to recruit students with disabilities. The National Center for Education Statistics, NISIS, estimates that 20% of students on college campuses have some form of disability, yet only 5% to 10% are registered with offices of disability services. Most college students are unaware of services specifically offered in the area of reasonable accommodations, and the responsibility is placed solely on them to register and activate their afforded accommodation, much different from the experience of a recent high school graduate whose individual education plan, IEP, has followed them through their academic career. According to NISIS, less than half of the university's nationwide mention campus disability services in their general material. Moreover, only 39% of the schools provide information regarding reasonable accommodations as part of their recruitment package. There's a great need for marketing strategy to address recruiting students with disabilities in post-secondary education. Hostos and many of my colleagues throughout the disability service offices at CUNY took on that challenge to close the gap and establish CUNY as a leader in higher education and the provider of world-class accommodations. We created a marketing outline. We established an office brand, name, logo, identity. We reviewed national trends emerging with disability identification. We developed focus groups of faculty, staff, student leaders to understand students' accommodation needs and universal design best practices. We created accessible marketing material. We established a target audience, faculty, staff, students, parents, high schools, high school transitional counselors, Axis VR, Commission for the Blind, community-based organization. We created a marketing package, flyers, brochures, handbooks, digital versions of informational packets, and promotional items. We developed a formal marketing strategy. We created a marketing script to represent services we have to offer. We revisited all informational materials available for accuracy, pertinent information, and accessibility, updated the website to follow national best practices, and established a calendar of events to promote services on and off campuses. These are just a few examples of Hostos taking an active role in recruiting students with disabilities that will lead to degree attainment and successful transition to employment. My team and I at Hostos begin our student relationships pre-enrollment. We visit high schools virtually and in person to talk about the college experience, academic programs, career goals, extracurricular activities, how to pay for college, supportive services available, and accessing accommodations on college campuses. We do not do this, we do this in partnership with students, so student leaders always accompany my team. I am proud to serve as one of the faculty advisors for the CUNY Coalition for Students with Disabilities, CCSD. CCSD's mission is to serve and represent students with disabilities that are enrolled at the City University of New York. They are dedicated in improving inclusion, access, leadership development, social and civic engagement opportunities, and fostering community among CUNY nearly 10,000 students with disabilities. I am honored to be part of such a fantastic group of student leaders. Some of these student leaders helped us create the Universal Design Learning and Leadership Initiative, UDL Squared. The project is housed at the Hostos Community College Office of Disability Services and is in partnership with CUNY Central's Office of Student Inclusion Initiatives. It is operated by a diverse group of paid student colleagues who are given the opportunity to elevate, and it is operated, sorry, to elevate their leadership skills while promoting positive university-wide awareness around disability empowerment. Students engaged in disability leadership throughout the institution are encouraged to reach out to UDL Squared Team for hands-on support, advisement, promotion, and sponsorship for any project or initiative aimed at making gain for the disability community at CUNY. But recruiting is just the tip of the iceberg, and retention and graduation aware accommodation and transitioning successfully from high school to college become essential in achieving student academic success. At Hostos, we have created a strategic plan that looks at the following: customizing individual accommodation plans to meet students' learning style, introducing students to the concept of teaching styles that is really picking the right professor, reviewing previous accommodation plans to identify strategies that worked and did not, introducing them to assistive technology based on the limitation of their disability, lending them the hardware and software needed. We created community by getting them involved in office events and campus disability awareness campaigns. On day one, we introduced career development and the importance of choosing a major based on career goals and a series of workshops leading to obtaining and retaining employment. We connect students to mentors, clubs, student government, and student supportive services to meet their needs, virtual or in person. The accommodation process is all done in partnership with faculty, students, and the Office of Disability Services. The last three years have helped the way we deliver academic curriculum. It opened the doors to distance learning and services we had never seen before. Although the pandemic was challenging in many ways, it forced a creativity and a vision for the university that supported students with disabilities and those who develop chronic illnesses because of COVID-19. We now have the mechanisms that allow us to review accommodation requests for virtual options to in-person courses and present opportunities to students who may not be able to come on campus. CUNY continues to broaden accommodations for students with chronic medical conditions with various learning modalities: fully remote, high flex classes spaces, and hybrid courses. Reasonable accommodations for many also change. Disability Service Offices at CUNY have established protocols and procedures to deliver mandated services to students with disabilities through virtual measures. This staff has access to Microsoft Teams, individual work emails, virtual walk-in sessions, Zoom, Starfish, Blackboard, and any other online platform to communicate with students to ensure that CUNY complies with the ADA, the Rehabilitation Act, and CUNY's Guidelines for Accessibility. I am proud of the work that we have done at Hostos and throughout the university for a very diverse constituency. However, I know that we could do even more with city support. I thank the administrative leadership at CUNY and at Hostos for their support to helping to make the university a prime destination for disabled students in pursuit of access to higher education. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank you for highlighting some of the things. I was taking notes during the testimony. I almost said, maybe we should be switching spots. You highlighted a number of important things that I think don't always get addressed, but I would hope in the legislation do get addressed. And one of the big things is that this 10% number, and as you recognize, that's probably low, right? And that's, anyone who's worked in a school can probably guess that that 10% number only represents, sorry, the 10,000 students only represents 10% when it's something like 19% of students in our DOE schools have IEPs. And that's not to mention the work that you're doing with Unlimited. That's with the District 75 schools. So is that, CUNY Unlimited, is that on every single campus? On which campuses does that exist?
Presently, it's at five campuses officially, so Hostos Community College, Queens College, College of Staten Island, Kingsborough, and...
Get into every borough?
BMCC, Borough of Manhattan Community College, there we go. And then informally, we also have three other DOE programs at Lehman College, Brooklyn, and mega Evers.
And how many students participate in this CUNY Unlimited program?
So generally, they're small programs, about 20 students per campus.
And in these programs, it's, do students in District 75, are they all students with intellectual disability?
Yeah.
Is that the, and then the nonprofit you mentioned works with them and with CUNY to ensure that they receive whatever accommodations that they require?
So there are two different models, one with the DOE where teachers from DOE provide most of the accommodations on campus with support from the campus disability offices, and then the...
And that's, I'm sorry, and that's outside their...
They're considered duly enrolled, so they spend all of their time at the campus, even though they're...
Oh, so the students in District 75 are enrolled at CUNY and DOE, so, okay. So it's like early college?
Sort of, yes. They're auditing generally.
It's like, okay.
Yeah. And then the AHRC model, AHRC provides the wraparound supports for four campuses, and we're adding a fifth campus at Queensborough Community College next fall.
Okay. I do want to mention that we've been joined by Councilmember Barron as well. And so is, I missed the part about the AH, what's called, AHC?
AHRC.
AHRC.
So they provide...
Yeah, all the acronyms. You did warn me about all the acronyms.
Yes.
I thought I was warning you with moped, but you, you hire a full-time staff just to come up with acronyms?
[laughter]
You know, so the AHRC model is transitioning from high school to...
They're generally out of school, and so then they're fully supported by AHRC.
And so there's a whole nonprofit whose job it is to support them, but also help with the transition, that they had services, whatever they were, in high school, and they are ideally getting services in college, but that takes a whole, I guess, nonprofit transition team. Is there a mechanism that they use at all to have a school directly share, let's say, the IEP with the college as a form of documentation to show that accommodations are, would benefit the student and are necessary?
So Chair Dinowitz, when we're looking at it from the CUNY Unlimited perspective, the answer is yes, right? So we are able to review documentation when we look at it from students matriculated on a college campus. As you know, it's, the responsibility is on the student to be able to disclose, and that's bringing their documentation as well. I think that if there was a mechanism in place to be able to share that, that would definitely help disability service offices be able to connect with students. Apparently, it does not exist.
And identify, identify our students with disabilities, right? Because where, as was mentioned, it's 10% identified as students with disabilities. So this, something like that would also help you identify those students in the first place?
And be able to use a marketing plan like Hostos to be able to do outreach. So even if they didn't self-identify, reach out to them.
Thank you. We've also, we've just been joined by Councilmember Hanif, welcome. So I really like what you laid out in the, in the marketing plan, and, oh, and we've also been joined by Councilmember Mealy. Hello. I got, he'll get two shout-outs. Councilmember Barron is still here. He gets two shout-outs, cool. And Batshir's still here, well, and Chair Lee's still here. But I think the marketing's the most, one of the most interesting aspects to me, because that gets to some of the problems even before the students are receiving accommodations. And given some of the hearings we have, you know, I know that the students who benefit from these accommodations are being served well, but part of what I'm talking about now is getting there in the first place. So you've laid out a whole marketing strategy, and I actually looked on, have you heard of YouTube? It's this website with all these videos, and there was a video posted by one of your offices four years ago, and it has not even 10,000 views. And it explains in there for three minutes and I think 26 seconds about, for students with disabilities, how they can receive accommodation. And I think it's a great tool. We talk about this marketing all the time. We spoke about it last time with workforce development. We spoke about it two hearings ago with remote education and how there's marketing, and it seems that there's no centralized marketing plan. This YouTube video was posted four years ago, had, like I said, less than 10,000 views, and it's one of these marketing strategies which, you know, could go out, but is not being done. And so what centrally, what marketing strategies exist centrally so that outside of any systemic, you know, sharing of data, that students and parents and faculty and advocacy organization, whoever works with that student, transition to college, is fully aware of what's available to them and is encouraged to visit the office for students with disabilities?
Presently, I would say we co-market with outside agencies that specifically address the needs of people with disabilities. So generally, they're hosting an event, and CUNY is participating in that event to market CUNY and then the offices.
When you say, do you pay them?
No.
Okay, good. No, seriously, because if only 10% of the students are identifying, that's, they're doing a bad job. But partnering with agencies already doing, you know, we have resource fairs all the time, but my concern is that, is that sort of reaching out, and I'm concerned again centrally, so it doesn't appear as though there's a proactive centrally marketing plan or supports. I did find something online which I think is great, and CUNY has this sort of great best practices, it's going to take me a second to find, best practices for creating PDF and Microsoft Office documents, for example. And one of the things you say there is, I say "you" as if you sat there and typed it, but, you know, the collective "you," that in a PDF and Microsoft Word document, use 12-point or larger font. That's one example of, I think, a best practice for people with disabilities. My concern is that when looking online, I found a few examples of, that's just straight-up not being done. And I, and I don't want to, and the point here isn't to shout out any particular college. The point is to, is to do better, so I'm not going to say the name of the college, but I'm looking at one college's checklist, and the checklist is great. I think it's a great tool for students, people with and without disabilities alike, but, you know, you can't see from here, that's kind of the point, you can't see from here, but the font is very small, it almost looks like eight or 10-point type on this checklist, which is, again, a great tool and idea. I'm looking at another one here. It's a student handbook, which is like 61, at least 61 pages long, and the table of contents is an eight-point type, and then the very section which talks about disability services is 10-point type. And so what directive from Central is provided to your individual campuses to make sure that the, the marketing and the resources that they're putting out in the first place, not to even mention marketing and bringing people in, but what directives from Central CUNY are being given to our individual campuses to ensure that the resources being provided are actually, according to your own guidelines, you know, accessible to everyone, the very people who need the services?
I'll take it. So the opportunity is made available, the directive may not be as clear, so I'm just going to own that in the way that we need to.
Can, so can, and I don't mean to interrupt, I mean, can you?
Well, that's the thing.
Can you just do it?
We need to be more directive in offering access to the tools, because the tools exist. You, all you have to do is upload, stop me when I start going wrong here, you need to upload the information in a way that then allows it to be, you get information back that says, this is not accessible, and this is what you need to do to make it accessible. So the tool is there, but we need to drive the faculty to it, the staff to it, in a more directive manner so that we ensure that it happens, because yes, that is the expectation.
So I want to, I want to make sure, so we've also been joined by Councilmember Williams, and those other council members are still here. I want to make sure I'm kind of being clear in my concern. What I'm, what I am concerned with is the direction being, hey, faculty, professors, here's more work for you to do that really can and should be coming, what I believe is, is central, whether it's an audit of, and I'm talking about the handbook, I'm not talking about the core syllabus, I'm not talking about the PowerPoints that are provided. I'm specifically, right now, talking about the checklists, which are good, the handbook, which is a good thing to have. I'm specifically talking about the directions from Central CUNY and the resources and support, or an audit done of those materials to the individual campuses, right? Because disability services are provided by the campus, it's not an individual professor deciding, I'm going to find a note-taker for this student, I'm going to, I'm going independently find an ASL interpreter, right? So what can be done centrally to ensure that the materials in the first place exist for the students who need them the most?
So one of the things that I can assure you...
So one of the things that I can assure you, and I'll leave it to the experts to talk about the details on this, is if a student, and a particular student, needs that accommodation, that is going to be provided. They are going to get the information in a format that is aligned with their need. But I hear what you're saying. You're saying the information is out there. Someone could go looking for it, but then it's not accessible for them because it's not done in the format that we say is most critical. So I fully hear you, and I understand the need for an audit and that. But you, either of you want to comment on?
So Chair Dinowitz, I think we have become spoiled on the campus because I want to say, within the last 10 years, assistive technology has become a game changer. So although that document seems not accessible, when accompanied with assistive technology that students are provided, it does become accessible. I think you bring up an important point. Not every student who potentially is looking, say, at the Office of Disability Services or coming to Hostos, right, will have that technology, our potential, you know, our, 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 our student that, you know, might just be a potential student. And making sure that the documentation and the, the services that we provide is accessible to them. So I think from the continuing student on campus, every, every accommodation plan is accompanied by a assistive technology training. And I think that from that perspective.
I don't, by the way, I don't doubt that the services are given. I don't doubt that any of you care. But, you know, if I'm a student with a reading disability or a vision impairment, and it's, and I know, let's even say I know I got some disability office, but my student handbook is eight-point type. So I can't even access it in the first place. And I'm someone who, and, and now we're just talking about a student who self-identifies. That's that 10%, which is probably off by 100% as we, it's my guess, which is off by, you know, it's off by half. Half this, whatever, math. Like if it's, if it's the same number of 19% with IEPs, if that number translates to the same 19%, we're getting half the students. That's not clear. So even in the first place, for students who struggle with a disability, struggle to even like own it, right? Because it's, it's an emotional skill, the self-advocacy. It's, there's a lot of layers to it. And they say, all right, fine, I'm going to do it. Let me find the office, ugh, eight-point type, ugh, 10-point type. And I had difficulty honestly finding it for some of the colleges on the website to begin, on their respective websites to begin with. So now, again, I'm just talking about access and resources. And so, again, what I'm hoping is, I, I, I guess you can't really give like a full, yes, let's do it. But what I am asking is that you go back and for each college, audit and say, let's make the resources according to our own best practices, comply, and I'll put that in quotation marks, but, but using the best practices to provide the resources to begin with, and just make it as easy as possible for students to find it. And, you know, then, then we'll get into the marketing, okay? I want to turn, you know, I have, I have a bunch more, but I want to turn it over to Chair Lee and then some of my colleagues to ask questions. Okay. And turn it over to, to, to Chair Lee and then to two of my, to, at least two of my colleagues. And then I have some more follow-up questions. Have fun. She's asking a very tough question. So she's building suspense. Megan, you wait.
Sorry, sorry.
No problem.
Okay. And just bear with me because I, I took notes on all the testimony. So I have a lot of papers here. So forgive me. Really quick question, because, so Carrie, because in your testimony, you had said, one of the bullet points that struck me was, we often encounter adult learners who have never received an evaluation or have documents that are quite out of date, cannot afford a new one. So just out of curiosity, what's the biggest barrier to that? Is it the cost? Like, how much does it cost? Is it funding? Is it just access to getting an evaluation? Or what's the biggest challenge there? And how difficult would it be to get them an updated evaluation?
I would say primarily cost, and then second, providers.
So the providers who can administrate, do the administrative situation, sorry, of the evaluation?
Correct. We, we have a, a resource list, but generally, the waiting list to get an appointment is long for low-cost providers.
What is the waitlist, if you don't mind me asking?
At times, it could be six months, and the cost can be from a sliding scale of $300 to $3,000 for a full psychoeducation evaluation.
Okay. And I would imagine that that would also be one of the barriers to why the numbers are low, right? So in other words, if we actually had updated numbers and evaluations, then that probably would contribute to having more data and numbers that accurately affect the student body. Okay. The other question I had was, so Project Reach. It's increased by at least 50%, you mentioned. An additional 100,000 would fund an additional three to five micro projects and increase program capacity to 75%. So can you go a little bit more into detail into what the 100,000, like what are, what would those three to five micro projects look like?
So currently, the grants that we administer through, the, the grant that we receive, so we do micro grants to the campuses. And so they have projects that range in cost between 10 and 25,000.
Okay. Got it. So, okay, so it could potentially even do more than, okay. Got it, okay. And then also, just for clarification, in the last bullet point, when you're saying a pilot project, because this is interesting for, for me, at two campuses for 250,000 would formalize the credential? Do you mean with JACCO? Or what kind of credentialing are you, are you talking about?
So this is leaning into the meaningful credential that's recognized by the USDAOE.
Got it, okay. So without that, it's going to be really difficult to be able to have these types of services, you're saying?
Right. So generally, what it would do is it would help formalize those campus programs.
Okay.
And move the students into more of the CUNY structure.
Okay. And then my other question was, and this is just coming from my experience on the nonprofit sector side, where, you know, I worked with a population that had extremely limited English. And then on top of that, there's tons of stigma around both disabilities as well as mental health, which is why I wanted to start up a mental health clinic that was culturally linguistically sensitive. And I know just from working on the ground that the, the numbers in a lot of those communities, especially immigrant, where English is not the primary language, a lot of those numbers are under-reported, if not reported at all. And so I guess my question is, what are your efforts? And I know it's difficult, but what are the efforts to reach out to those students or to seek out accommodations for them? And are there, like, I can just think of also for myself, if you're willing to, there's a couple nonprofits that I know in the community that work with more language-specific communities. And so I'm wondering if there are relationships there that could be built upon? Because this is a very difficult community to reach into. And, and oftentimes, the data is not collected at all. So I'm just wondering how we can, you know, how we can help support those efforts? And, and also currently, if you could describe a little bit what CUNY does do in terms of the, the, the language barriers?
I can give you the perspective from, from Hostos, which we have a large number of students that English is their second language. We, we build relationships. We go into the classroom. We make sure that we, we present to classes, making sure that even if in your native tongue, if you struggled, right, there are resources here at the campus to be able to help them. The other big obstacle that we faced is finding providers that are able to also test in their native language.
Yeah.
Because of what we see is that there's a huge discrepancy in being able to get accurate scores and levels to see where they're at and to create those accommodation plans based on those language barriers. So Dr. Shockley had, had mentioned, we have a list of providers that we provide to our disability service directors. And in those, in that list, we also look at providers that are, also provide services in multiple languages so that our colleagues know who to reference and connect that student with to get adequate documentation. So that we can then provide adequate support.
Yeah. And, and on the, on the workforce side, like you mentioned, it's really hard to find folks that speak the dual languages, but have the proper certification to provide the services. And then going along that same vein, how has it been on all the campuses, generally speaking, in terms of, I guess this is shifting more to the mental health side, because I've been hearing across a lot of the different schools, universities, that, you know, students are still really struggling post-pandemic. And so I'm just wondering, I know across the board, the workforce issue is probably the number one issue that we're seeing in the mental health side. And so I just wanted to get a sense on the CUNY campuses. Is that similar? How are you all staffed in terms of, you know, the social workers or other mental health professionals on campuses? Is there enough? Is there a need?
There's always going to be a need because we can't meet the demand. And that's, that's national. But we are much better than we were with the additional support from the state that allowed us to have additional staff. We're not where we need to be, but we're better than we were. And students have been able to access in-person opportunities as well as telemental health and other alternative ways of meeting that need. And so we've had to be more creative about that. But we're closer in terms of the standards that are set by the Counseling Center organizations and so forth. We're closer to that number. Again, once the stimulus money is no, no more, we will be in a position where those positions are not going to be funded. And we need to find ways to keep that staff available to our students. Because that, as I said, that demand is not going to decline. And when you started your previous question, Chairperson Lee, you talked about stigma.
Yeah.
And I wanted to make sure I addressed that as well. Because when we start talking about that adult population of learners, they're coming from a different point in time. I think some of our younger students may be in a better position to say, I'm standing up for my rights. I'm going to advocate for myself. I'm going to get what I need. And that's the nature of CCSD. And I give them credit, all credit for that. If they let me hang out with them, I'm with them all the time. But what I will tell you is that for our adult learners and returners, it is likely the stigma associated with learning-related disabilities and things that separate you from being able to get the education you need. It's like, I'm not supposed to need. I'm not supposed to appear as though I need help from anyone for anything. I'm coming back. I'm going to make this happen. And I think that there's a piece of that marketing that Chairperson Dinowitz keeps referencing and wanting us to pay attention to. A piece of that has to be about de-stigmatizing.
Yeah.
The services, de-stigmatizing the offerings and helping those who need the service understand, we're here for you. This is about you. You belong here. And we are going to support your success. So both things are important. Okay.
Chair Lee, just to add to V.C. Maybank's comment, the silver lining from the last three years was being able to provide virtual services specifically in counseling. And we talk about stigma, just being able to get close to that office, right? Sometimes, which is a burning within itself. But being able to now use these virtual telehealth services definitely helped many of our students where stigma was preventing them from, from seeking services.
Yeah. No, definitely. Can I, can I ask questions to Moped? I feel like, I'm like, we need to get you engaged in the conversation too. Okay. So, so just really quickly, is there a tracking mechanism within Moped that, that is able to keep track of how many students with disabilities you're able to assist in connecting to the Office of Disability Services at CUNY specifically?
So we don't currently, oh, sorry. Emily Sweet, General Counsel, Deputy Commissioner at MOPD. So MOPD is currently not engaged in this issue. And we appreciate that the council is, is looking at this issue. But it's not something that we have expertise in. And so the answer is, no, we don't, we don't have a tracking mechanism.
Okay. So that sort of, I guess, leads me into my next question, which is, I was just curious to know thoughts and opinions on Intro 660. And then also, what would it take to be able to have capacity within Moped to, to implement something like this?
So I think that, you know, it would take a lot of resources, obviously. It's not something we currently do. We don't operate any program like this currently. So I think we would need to take a, I don't want to just talk off the cuff. So I think we would need to take a much closer look at it. And we'd be very happy to discuss with the council at a, at a later date.
Okay. And included in that, I would love to hear yours or, you know, the department's thoughts on any specific suggestions you have on how the bill can be improved. Because obviously, if we want this to work, it has to be something that you have capacity to be able to implement. And so I'd be curious to hear, if it's dollars, how many dollars, right? If it's another resource, like the tracking system, you know, you know, those, those lists of things that would be required, I guess, for you all to, to be able to potentially do something like this or implement? I'd be curious to hear all those, like laundry list, I guess, of suggestions from you.
Sure. We'd be absolutely happy to, to speak with the committee at a, at a later date. So, and we also want to say, we're not sure that in the first instance, it would, MOPD would be the appropriate entity to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
This actually, so, so my, I'll, I'll ask one more question and then hand it off to other folks because I don't, I want to let others be able to ask questions as well. But in the last hearing that we had with Moped, one of the things that we had talked about is, I know nationally, on a federal level, they had this goal of having 7% requirement for federal agencies to hire folks that have various, varying disabilities and hire people from the disabilities community. And they actually exceeded that goal. And it's over 8%, I believe. So I'm curious, because it almost seems like the CUNY LEAD program, I'm sorry, is that the correct one with the workforce? CUNY LEADS, could almost be a natural sort of continuum or feeder into something like, you know, providing workforce and jobs within city agencies. And so I wonder if that's a partnership, you know, because there's already existing resources and it's just about connecting the two? And so I wonder if that's also something that Moped would be willing or interested in having conversations with?
So MOPD does currently have employment, employment programs that work with CUNY that, that Carrie can testify about. She's, has more expertise in that than, than I would, actually.
Okay. And can you actually give us more data and details on that then? Because I remember this came up also in the last hearing, and we were just curious to find out more information on, on the, on the workforce piece and how we can up it?
Sure. In a general sense, MOPD visits our LEAD's meetings and shares work opportunities and has helped filter internship opportunities for, for students. I'd have to get more information on the data for how many students per year. But we would be really interested in an opportunity to help connect those students with city jobs.
Okay.
We do also provide training related to other types of exemptions for city employment that would apply to people with disabilities. So that's included as part of the LEAD's portfolio and, and conversation each year. But we would definitely be interested in, you know, doing something. And the other piece of that is, in what ways can we do capacity building within city agencies?
Yes.
To be good places to work for people with disabilities?
Right. And it just me that, it, it just may be that both of you are just sort of the, the center in which you sort of, you know, deploy folks out into other city agencies. Because I know that, you know, not all city agencies are consistent when it comes to that, the hiring process of, of, of people with disabilities. And so I'd be curious to see how we can work with various city agencies more so to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. I just, two, two points I want to make. One is, do you have the data on the number of students who, who are older or who, who come to the Office of People with Disabilities, but don't get services? And if, for whatever reason, and then if that's disaggregated by, you know, you don't, you don't have the services because you don't have any documentation, and those who have documentation, but it's just not enough? If you don't have that, if you can get that over to us. And the last thing I would, I would just urge you, and then I'm going to turn it over to a couple of my colleagues. The council just invested in the recent budget for. The council just invested in the recent budget, $4.4 million in CUNY Reconnect. The purpose of CUNY Reconnect is to bring back, I think, 10,000 students who, for whatever reason, left the system. And as integral and as you're building that program and, and reaching out, if explicitly disability services, de-stigmatizing it and making explicit the options available to them, because I have a sneaking suspicion, it, it is perhaps the case that some dropped out because, because of a disability, visible or invisible. And you have the opportunity here to make something available explicitly and support, support this, people with disabilities who are, who are coming back in the system. So I'm going to urge you to do that. And I would now turn it, oh, we've been joined by Councilmember Brewer. Hello. I would now turn it over to Councilmember Mealy.
I want to thank you for this hearing. Intro number 660. I was just wondering, it's the Family Education Right and Privacy Act. It's a federal law that protects the privacy of public school students as well as giving the parents current students and any student turning 18 years old, the right to access their records upon request. Will this bill be overturned because of this federal law? We just looked it up, that's all. It won't be overturned?
I don't know. I don't know.
We don't know.
Okay, all right. I only have one other, two questions. I heard you say that when the stimulus money disappear, what is your plan B? Will you have to lay people off or do you have another contingency plan?
So the people who were hired with the stimulus funds or have a contract that ends at a certain point, so I don't know that.
But wouldn't you need that?
We still need the people. I'm not going to deny that. But we don't have a clear way to fund those positions at this point. And as I said, you know, some of the positions were supported with the resources we received from the state funding. That money will continue and those positions will remain. But there were others as well that, you know, we, we had this opportunity and we knew we had a need. And so we then have to just figure out if there are other ways that we partner with private initiatives or that we leverage our relationship with the council and with other legislators to figure out how we make certain that we are providing the resources necessary to support students in the mental health as well as in the disability services context.
Good to hear. How many students with disability received the IEP or the 504 students in high school before enrolling in CUNY?
We don't have any data on that.
So it's no, should we have, have to put in legislation to start tracking it? Huh?
We should be.
Maybe it should because this is so important that we have to know how many people are utilizing it or not utilizing it. Maybe that's where more funding could come in also if we did have a data.
I can speak from Hostos.
Go ahead, please.
And so it's about 58% of our students who register or self-disclose to our office submit an IEP as their form of documentation. The other students, it can be any other medical documentation. So at least from Hostos' perspective, it's about 59% of our students are, have an IEP.
So it could be more, but we don't know.
That's correct.
Okay.
That was what I was going to share. It's like the students who come to us from the public school system and who have an IEP or have 504, you know, or register in the 504, they can share that information with us, but we don't know. And so, you know, there may be a way to say to New York City Public Schools, how many students exiting at a certain point in time did have these documents, these credentials, this understanding and this evaluation. But in terms of us having it specifically, only if it's disclosed to us. We, we don't have it another way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hanif.
Thank you so much. First, I just want to share my gratitude with our chairs for hosting this hearing. And I wonder if a hearing like this was hosted when I was a student at Brooklyn College, integrated with the Center for Student Disability Services. I had just been diagnosed with lupus in my senior year of high school and there was a potential that I wouldn't be able to go to any school of choice because of my condition. It had led me to be either hospital-ridden or home, homebound for months on end. And I was able to get through my senior year of high school, getting homeschooled at a time when really that was not the norm. And, and then friends, community helped me apply for CUNY and I decided to go to Brooklyn College because of the abundant of services, but also because the B-11 bus took me straight to Maimonides. And I had to, and every student with disability has to consider their transportation options because accessorized at the time when I applied, I got, I had gotten rejected and was waiting out a one-year provision to be able to reapply again. So I'm personally very grateful for the Center for Student Disability Services at the Brooklyn College campus alongside the village of services that really supported me. I was part of the Scholars Program, I was part of the Women's Center, and countless faculty really, really provided support to ensure that I, I made it. But, you know, I was new to the realm of understanding disability. I was new to the realm of receiving health accommodations, not just from school, but as I was seeking out internships or even navigating the hospital system. I was quite shy and introverted around being, around really understanding that I needed to be my advocate as I, because the onus is on the student to seek out these services, to inform professors and other people as we're navigating all of these institutions. And so I'd like to know how faculty is informed, trained, and at what frequency to avoid this burden of, of students feeling insecure or judged as they're sharing like, I've got, I, I'm going to need extra time for exams or here are the accommodations I will need in order to succeed in this class. So that's one question that I have that I'd like to learn a little bit more about. My disabilities, and I'm gratefully in remission now, but still continue to navigate disabilities that are not visible anymore. It forced me out of pre-med and pushed me into women's studies and I landed, I've turned out fine. It worked out well for me. But, you know, what are we doing to really provide the one-on-one support as students determine what they want to major in, what they want to study and ensure that, that they're not being forced out of fields that they are interested in? And, and then third, can you share how these students are connecting with social workers? I'm really grateful to Councilmember Lee for really emphasizing that piece. You know, that was a missing link for me at the time because so much of my condition was so medically oriented that the mental health piece was just a sort of like, I need to figure that out, but didn't get to until I hit my, you know, late twenties and, you know, became a council member and now I have a therapist. But I'd like to know at that level, when students are connecting with these services, is there an approach where they're also can, immediately by default connecting with the mental health services that exist too? Thank you.
Before I let the experts address the specifics of your question, I just have to acknowledge you made a good choice in going to Brooklyn College.
Oh, yeah. I love. It's the best.
And I'm glad to hear you're in remission.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, as also a, a person who received two degrees from Brooklyn College, and it's, it's always good to be near and dear to, to my heart, I also began. I began my, my CUNY career at Brooklyn College after the Office of Disability Services. And I often say, the, you know, the profession found me. But we spent a lot of time not only educating faculty during orientation, but we were also part of the diversity, equity, and inclusion, right, of portfolio and initiative. And we added accessibility to that. Faculty had more one-to-one FaceTime with students than any office on campus. And we knew we had to be able to provide faculty with the understanding and how to refer students for services to our office without the stigma surrounding it. So we spent a lot of time being able to train faculty, not only on just the human touch of how do you refer a student, but what it takes to create accessible course content. So we also, we also collaborate with education technology and the Centers for Teaching and Learning on campus that are given the responsibility to train faculty on the latest assistive technology. And we're also having conversations about major and career goals from day one and how does the limitation of the disability play in or does not? I remember specifically at Brooklyn College, I had a student who is deaf and who wanted to be an audiologist. And someone told them that was impossible. And I remember, I went on Google and I started researching and it absolutely was possible. And I found 10 people that were audiologists and who were deaf. And we were able to connect the student to one of them who that person became their mentor. The end of that story is, the student did become an audiologist and at the time, probably about six years later, they were number 11 in that group. So it's, it's important, you know, yes, what's the question? You know, make sure that you're doing your research and don't assume, I think is extremely important, don't assume.
And can you speak to the connecting with social workers or mental health providers?
So at least from, from the disability service perspective, we look at students holistically. So we want to make sure not only are we looking at a diagnosis, which I, I can speak for myself, I, I do not really care about it. It's those limitations and how I'm going to help that student be able to connect. At times, we realize what the student might think is holding them back might not really truly be that, that, that obstacle and linking them to wraparound services like the Counseling Center, like the Women's Center, like athletics. Sometimes it's just, hey, I got to get into the gym and, and, and get active. We also found out that community was extremely important for students with disabilities and linking them to extracurricular activities that were truly accessible. We found out that many of the extracurricular activities were not and we had to make sure that, that, that they were. But making sure that each and every student, we were creating that individual accommodation plan, but not only looking at what that student was going to need to be academically successful, looking at the wraparound services and building those relationships on our college campus that when we refer that student there, we refer them to a name, somebody that was going to take that student and follow, follow up. And we did it a, a, as a community. If not, I'll be honest, usually the student would not get to that next office. You literally had to take a student-centered approach to be able to hand it over to the next person. So I know Brooklyn College has done that and, and will continue to do that and, and my colleagues at the other CUNY campuses.
One of the things that I often say is that people think universities are about the knowledge only. But we don't invite students to our campuses, chop their heads off, put their heads in chairs, open them up and fill them with knowledge. That's not what we do. We invite whole people. And so we must respond to whole people. Whatever it is that they bring with them, we have to be ready to be responsive to the totality of what it takes for their success. And in order to do that, we have to have social workers and we have to have audiologists. And we, you know, we need people from a mult, from a multitude of perspectives to think about how we assure the success of our students. And it is not only about the knowledge given, but it is about the context of the person. And community is critical for this population of students. And that is why I love CCSD so much because they build community and they recognize the importance of having activity and engagement and relationship. And so all of those things become a part of it so that someone can say, I know how to get you to a social worker to help with those issues.
Yeah, I think that's wonderful. I mean, you know, given that the CUNY system is a CUNY commuter school ecosystem, it really created isolation very quickly. And so, you know, as I was navigating getting surgeries and frequent hospital visits and treatment, I did rely on the campus's support systems in addition to the Center for Student Disability Services for a strong community. And, you know, I, I can't say enough good things, but I remember really the early days of wanting hybrid or remote classes and being a part of the activism also, which, you know, CUNY is so famous for, that student activism and recognizing disability justice champions on campus and like how much of a fight we had to put in addition to receiving already available services was also crucial. And so thank you for your work and listening to us and really looking forward to continuing to work together to ensure that CUNY is accessible and that we're leading with disability justice values at the forefront.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanif. And I, I also want to publicly thank you. I think you hear, here and anywhere we go that there is still stigma surrounding disabilities. And I think you speaking so openly about it really goes a long way and I think showing people that it is okay and important and valuable to self-identify, to get the services and support they need and just how incredibly successful one can be when they, you know, when they embrace, you know, who they are, their disability and, and be part of that disability community. So I want to thank you for that. Next, we have Councilmember Williams.
Hello. I guess I have a similar, not similar story, but just another personal story. And I know we've been focused a lot on like the transition from high school to college. But a few years ago, I actually had no idea that disability services were available. I'm in the CUNY Grad Center and one of my cohort members, I was talking to her about some of the things I was struggling with. It was a mental disability, it was actually ADHD and how I wasn't able to like really focus to get anything done. And she was like, well, this is what you need to do to get services and accommodations. And I'm like, what? You, you have like services and accommodations? You're like signing up with a disability off? And she's like, yeah. And she walked me through the whole process. And I'm sharing that to say, I, if I did not open up to her and just share some of the struggles that I was having, I would not know that there was accommodations for me as I was trying to matriculate in my PhD program. And so I know you've gotten riddled with a lot of questions around like promotions, but just to the CUNY system, in addition to undergrad students, I think grad students, especially grad students that are doing intensive programs that are extremely critical and totally like mess with your mental and emotional state, that we're providing support for those students as well and promoting that the service is available because I knew nothing about the service. So are you doing anything to assist grad students that do have various disabilities?
So I'm just going to tell you that I heard the cheers coming from Fifth Avenue just as you said that. I just want you to know that.
Yes, I, that, yes, that building, the library, stressful, yeah.
They're excited that you advocated.
Yeah. So in short, yes, there is a Disability Services Office at the Graduate Center and, and across the, the graduate portfolio with our various schools' graduate programs.
And before I was at Hostos, I, I spent some time at Baruch College and at Brooklyn where we had graduate students. Many students that were in the Grad Center, right, doing some off, off-site work at our campuses. And I think it was really getting into the classrooms, talking to faculty once again and department chairs about accommodations. Sometimes, talk about stigma, there's also this misassumption that accommodations have to do with failing or passing. No, it's about maximizing on your academic potential. So if you're an A-minus student and you should be an A student, you'd have to be able to utilize your afforded accommodations. And that was having those conversations. And that was having those conversations. And also students, I know VC Maybank has referenced CCSD, but having student ambassadors, there's no better way to get information out, as you noticed, as another student saying, hey, there's services out there. And this is how you're able to get it done. So we continue to present new student orientation, faculty orientation, and making sure that department chairs know this is definitely not about failing or passing. It's about academic potential and how do we assist and help that student to get there.
Yeah, I was going to actually ask if you provided this information during orientations because that would be a really good place. But I don't remember receiving the information at my orientation when I entered into my program. And also maybe a suggestion or question, you can feel free to comment on it, is to, in addition to informing folks of the services, to also have this nuanced conversation about, you know, dismantling stigma. Because I think it's important to have those conversations in tandem because, to your point, my colleague did that for me by saying like, no, like you need this accommodation, you are struggling. It is okay. Because I was a little like hesitant to even go into the office to even apply for that accommodation because, and especially Black and Brown students, which I want to specifically talk about, that stigma is even greater because of the communities we come from and especially if the disability isn't a physical disability. If you're having some type of mental disability, that stigma is even greater. And so me, like over a cheer, I'm like, no, I don't want to go get an accommodation and ask for extra time to like submit a paper. But she kind of walked me through the process and made me comfortable and sort of confident that I was doing the right thing. So just adding, when you go to promote the services, I think it's also important to just talk about this issue that seems to be a current theme as well. Okay, I'll turn some of my questions to the actual just process. So for CUNY, do you ever need to veri-- oh, my time. Can I have extra time? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Accommodations in action. So when you need to verify the disability of incoming or new student, does part of the verification process include contacting the high school to see if they need special accommodations? So is there any direct work with the high school? Or is the, and I think I'm hearing the onus is on the student, but just wanted to know if there is any collaboration with the high school.
So outside of being able to assist the students to make that connection, especially if they weren't able to receive their IEP as they left the high school, making that connection, finding out who that individual is that they need to speak to and getting the student information and literally walking them through the process of getting that documentation. We do not have a relationship where we can just request the IEP from the high school. We still have to either go through the student, right? Or wait for them to then get additional documentation. I also want to state that documentation is not always the deciding factor on whether an accommodation is going to be given. The ADA and the latest addendum allows disability services directors to make a professional decision based on oral, right? Just being able to meet with the student and hear some of the limitations of the disability. So, you know, even if the student's having trouble with the IEP, we're still able to make that connection. And as that student is waiting to be able to get further documentation, still be able to serve the student.
Okay. And have you had a situation of the reverse? Have any like high school administrators or, I know there's always like college counselors proactively reached out to a college in advance of one of their students coming into your school to just sort of give you a heads up if someone has a special need?
Yeah, so we work very closely, I can speak from the Hostos perspective. We work very closely with our neighboring high schools and metropolitan high schools in general to be able to create those relationships with the transitional counselors. And we have group days where the counselor comes with the students. We have pizza, we talk about the campus, they get a tour, and we help them through the accommodations process. So we have built those relationships. We also, pre-pandemic, used to have college-as-possible events where we used to collaborate with N Y C and include. We used to bring parents, caregivers, students together to just walk them through the college process and to let them know it might be easier to get an A than work the bureaucracy of being able to get through the college acceptance and application process. So we do work closely with the DOA.
Okay, thank you. Just one more question on the bill. And just for the record, I hope CUNY is duplicating what you are doing because it seems like you guys are doing a great job. But I'm sure all CUNY colleges are not doing the same thing. So I hope if overall CUNY administrators are here are duplicating the effort. So just on the bill, and I think it just falls on the mayor's office of people with disabilities, what challenges do you forecast in implementing the bill?
Emily Sweet, MOPD. So certainly, as I stated before, this is not currently an issue that we've engaged in, so we would have to educate ourselves about that. But assuming we were to do this, obviously, there would be a resource issue. So I think we welcome the opportunity to speak with committee members at a later date and delve more deeply into these issues.
Thanks, Chair, for your graciousness.
That was time and a half, it was perfect.
And thank you very much.
Yeah, Councilmember Barron.
Thank you. This is a very timely issue. In our communities outside of CUNY, mental health challenges have been, I mean, devastating our communities. So this is great that there is a path for those who have those challenges that they can pursue higher education. My colleagues often ask a lot of questions around microthings that are important but also cost money. I just want to encourage my colleagues, when we get to the budget, and it's $101 billion, and we look at mental health services and we see the pitiful low amount of money allocated for it. And when we look at CUNY, when I was in the State Assembly, we always fought for CUNY to make sure CUNY had adequate money. And you're right, the state did give some, but not enough. They had a $220 billion budget. See, we get to these hearings and say all of these things. CUNY, were you going to do this, you going to do that? There's 10,000 students. How many offices do you have on each college campus? Do you just have some staff member, you know, assigned? Or do you have a whole full office that can provide full services? Remember that at budget time. When we get to the budget and we pass a budget that cuts over hundreds of millions of dollars from education, and when we get to $101 billion budget that says you can't hire nobody else to put a freeze on it and 3% from every agency is cut, I just want us to remember that. Because when we get to these hearings, we get to the micro and we say things that cost money. And the city has plenty of it. As we speak right now, there's $8.3 billion in a rainy day fund. Well, it's raining today, so we need to take a little bit out of that. Having said all of that, I want to also say that I always have to do this because I don't think Black students are adequately represented when it comes to these hearings. We have Hostos here, last hearing on employment or job development. We had LaGuardia and Hostos. Where's mega Evers? Where's the Black colleges? And I'm always mentioning Black students because when it comes to Black students, we have the figure here, 27%. But I want to see, York has a lot of Black students, mega Evers College has a Black students. One of them should have been sitting up here, just like Hostos is explaining to all of the challenges they have. We need to hear it from Black students' perspective from these colleges. Because oftentimes, we are left out of things. So I have to always mention Black, and there he goes again, absolutely. Every time it's neglected, I'm going to mention the importance of Black students being represented. Having said that, I think the CUNY Leads Program and Project Reach, I think it is, and CUNY Unlimited. How is the funding for those programs? And what would be the funding need to make them adequate? And which colleges have a staff person? And which ones have an actual office? And I want to also consider, I don't know what political correctness is nowadays, but I don't think people, students are disabled. I think they are able and they challenged, they're emotionally challenged, they're physically challenged. What disables the students is a lack of budget priorities to help them meet their challenges in a higher learning institution. So I'm not crazy about the disabled label. You know, I understand it, and I've used it in the past. But we need to move towards, you know, these are emotionally, mentally, physically challenged. And they will not be disabled if we enable them with proper funding so they can have access to higher learning.
Thank you, Councilmember Barron. In thinking about the funding for Project Reach, it's funded by way of a grant through the FAR Fund. That's, at this point, most of the funding that goes towards the eight projects that we have. CUNY Unlimited is funded by way of, for campuses that are participating as comprehensive transition post-secondary programs. It's a federal designation. Those students are able to draw down Pell Funds for their education. Hostos was the first campus that received that approval. And we have three others that are, that'll launch next fall. The DOE version of that, through their college inclusion program, is currently unfunded. And CUNY Leads, each campus has a position where there's a Leads Advisor, there are one job developer per borough, and then a neurodiversity job developer that's in process of being hired. So it's an open position that's state-funded. And this past year, the state also included an additional resource for CUNY Leads. That was a, we're hoping, you know, something that we'll see again at $165,000.
Oh, come on now, look at that, $165,000, really? I mean, that's, I think they spend more on lunch money during the course of the year. But this is the real problem, you know, this is the real challenge. Because this is a serious issue. You know, when we talk about crime in our community, it's not more police. It's not more jails. It's more jobs, more workforce development, more anti-poverty programs, and more mental health services. And our public schools, and you mentioned the wraparound services, this is why I think you're doing a wonderful job with meager resources. And it really needs to be, it's on us. And I mean, we could always get better, nobody's perfect. You know, everybody can get better in what you're doing. But unless we really fund it appropriately, $165,000. And I've seen in our budget, 1.1 million for workforce development out of $101 billion. Took care of the police, but they didn't take care of us.
Thank you, Councilmember Barron.
I knew he was going to enter in that.
I see why you do your run-on sentences in your stream of consciousness.
I have to, because they seem to the other, oh, have plenty of time. Councilmember Williams, yeah, go ahead. We're generous to me, he can't wait till I stop.
Those are questions, what do you want? Councilmember Brewer, would you like to ask questions?
Would you like to continue, Councilmember Barron?
No, thanks, Councilmember Brewer. I appreciate your generosity, but I fulfilled my mission.
Sorry, two things. One, we've been joined by Deputy Speaker Ayala, and it's Professor Brewer.
Oh, please. I teach at Hunter. But one of the questions, though, is, because in the past, we have a new room to teach in now. The previous room would not have been able to accommodate a wheelchair. So my question is, maybe you discussed this, I'm sorry, I was at another meeting, but are there campuses that still need, I know you talked about this a little bit, ADA for those who do use wheelchairs or other kinds of support? Because it does seem at Hunter, maybe there are elevators and so on, but there are classrooms that are really small. I don't know if this is an issue, it's just, I do have a lot of friends in wheelchairs, a lot of students in wheelchairs, et cetera. I was just wondering if this is an issue or maybe it's not.
So space is always an issue when it comes to college campuses. And pre-pandemic, we packed in chairs and tables and things of that nature. And it could affect a student with a disability, especially if they were using some form of mobility device. Students who do use some form of mobility device just check in with the disability service office. We do place accessible furniture in the classroom and we remove pre-existing furniture to kind of give space. Looking at it from a universal design perspective, we would love for the request not to even happen. And it's just there. And hopefully, we will get there at some point. But we're there to accommodate the student. And sometimes that even means moving the class in its entirety to locate it to a class with more space.
Okay, so it's a burden on the student, that's a challenge that you're trying to avoid and we're trying to avoid, for sure.
Correct.
And the age of our buildings is what it is. And so retrofitting some of those spaces is really difficult. But we do as much as possible with the resources that are provided to do that. But it's not going to be easy given.
That's my experience. Second is, I call John Mergul's schools professional school, obviously. Been there many times and so on. I called his school, many things are his school. But the question is, how, if you know, has, obviously, that's a virtual opportunity, do more students who have, in some cases, disabilities or differently-abled, is another way that I like to put it, using that as an opportunity for college? Or that is not something that comes up in your discussions? Because obviously, if it's hard to move around, sometimes just getting to campus is a challenge, not to mention, my friends, I have a lot of friends in wheelchairs. Their biggest issue is transportation. That is much more challenging than CUNY or any other work opportunities, getting to the place. So if you can do it virtually, they love it. So is that something that comes up often, not at all? Or people just doing that application on their own? Do you suggest that to people? How does that work? How does that play in the world that you're in?
I think, once again, that peer-to-peer experience has really paid off for students. So I had a meeting, I think it was two semesters ago now, with a set of students who had various disabilities and so forth. And it was, we were still remote for the pandemic piece. And they were talking about the fact that if it were not for online classes, because they were immunocompromised, many of them, they would not have been able to come back anyway. And so I think as we move forward in building our online portfolio, we are responding to the reality of students needing more of those opportunities. You know, the pandemic did a lot to us, but it taught us a lot. It forced us to pay attention to what we do and how we do it differently. And I believe that we are in a position of trying to make certain that we're responsive to what we now know. So yes, SPS did start off as the foundation for our online program development and that is now in the Office of the Provost and the Office of Academic Affairs. And I think you just had my whole set of colleagues here to talk about what was going on online. And so that effort, I believe, is going to make a difference for students with disabilities as much as anyone else.
It's just my experience, because the campuses are older, the classrooms are older, that the setup for online, if you're not at SPS or maybe Baruch, which is, I don't know, newer, some of the newer campuses, good luck. If the guy's not there at 8:00 in the morning when I teach, the IT is not working, then, you know, it's not happening. So I'm just saying, if we're thinking about incorporating IT and online for students in general, but particularly those who are differently-abled, then there's a lot of work to be done. So I keep going back to the infrastructure because it's, I know it's expensive, but that's where a lot of challenges are for this community. I mean, it would not work where I teach, I can tell you that right now. Because half the time, the IT, I got to call somebody and he's not there.
You're absolutely correct. And I think that March of 2019, it really changed the game for higher education and being able to provide, you know, virtual instruction and services. And we turned to SPS and our colleagues there to.
You turned to John, that's what you do.
To lead the way, because they were doing it for so long. But we have been able to adapt. And I think the last three years, we've been able to create opportunities that pre-pandemic, we would never be able to provide.
No, I agree. I just, because of the infrastructure being what it is. No, I agree, I just, because of the infrastructure being what it is, there's just a lot more work to be done.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Professor. It's not an inaccurate title, is it?
Thirty-five years I've been doing it.
All right, so, super professor, I guess, was more appropriate. I want to go back to something related, I think it was Councilmember Williams was asking about sharing information from the high school to the college, which is the crux of my bill, which is sharing the data. And you made mention of not sharing that information. But I kind of want to dig a little deeper, there is information that is shared between the Department of Education and CUNY. There is a working relationship, not just with these programs, but I have the freshman application worksheet, for example. And you ask for the student's OSIS number. And the OSIS number is a student, NYC DOE student's identification number. What information is shared between the DOE, the Department of Education, K-12, and CUNY by a student providing that OSIS number?
I don't know that I'm going to be able to answer that off the top, but we certainly can get that for you. But yes, there is a data feed, I'm not going to deny that.
Okay, so there's a data feed, so there is data shared. And in this bill, the goal would be to say, if a student and their family so desires, because there are privacy and I think FERPA issues, those exist. And that's why we're relying on MOPED to help us work through that. If the student so desires, and the family, maybe an advocacy organization that they work with, that data can also be shared. And if it is shared, can CUNY, would CUNY be able to commit to providing outreach to the students that they receive, who they, oh, this student has an IEP or a 504, well, an IEP, because a 504 would carry them, they have an IEP. We have the capacity to do outreach, or to send them a very specific mailer or phone call so that, so that they're not relying, like, like Councilmember Williams and Hanif are relying on just their friends who happen to know something about the way the system works. Is that a commitment that CUNY Central will be able to, to make and to work with the colleges to do?
Feed me my lines, feed me my lines. You know, it, it's a matter of being certain that, first off, we take care of those privacy issues. Because this, the.
Well, let's just go on the assumption that they're taking care of, and that's part of the work. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to you in a sec, Hanif is very patient listening, but I have a question for you that addresses this, too.
The development of a communication that can be pushed, yeah, those are things that are doable. I mean, we do that for different populations now, so there's no reason why we couldn't do that. Is that sufficient, becomes my question? Because there's so much, there's so much information flowing at any given moment when you are preparing to go to college. Stuff comes to you in so many ways. But we need to find ways to, to have the personal touch, and that's bandwidth, that's positions, that's people, that's resources, that's different. And so, yeah, it, we can send a communication that says, make sure you check this resource, make sure you click on this link, send an email to those students who are identified because we've gotten over those other hurdles. But is that sufficient in, with the population?
Right, well, I would think, obviously, the personal touch, any of us who do campaigns know, it's always that, that personal touch, whether it's the individual college, or again, CUNY Central. And to my, what I've observed in these past few hearings we've done is, it, it, there's a lot of resources at CUNY Central, which I don't think are being leveraged, this is my perspective, in the, in the proper way to ensure that the individual campuses are either getting the resources or the support that they need. And I think the example, look, you brought, you brought Hostos here, who appears to have a great marketing campaign, marketing team, appears to be doing that outreach. How are you leveraging that to make sure the other colleges, who I don't want to hold it up again, but have eight-point type in their student handbook? Another college I was looking at, I don't have, I didn't print it out, they have like a many, 100-page something handbook. And the only thing it mentions about disabilities is non-discrimination. That doesn't speak to the heart of, you know, really what students need. It's, it's, non-discrimination is different than providing resources. And so I believe that CUNY really needs to be providing more resources top-down and more coordination between campuses. Because look, if Hostos, again, you obviously brought the best one here, Hostos is doing something, you're not gonna bring the worst. If Hostos is doing something right, let's make sure those resources are, are available. If data sharing exists, I want, now, I want to talk about the data sharing for, for, for a second. The DOE currently uses a program called CSIS. And I know that, any teacher, special ed teacher watching, any teacher who's watching this or reading the transcript is rolling their eyes. Because CSIS, I have to like use my words carefully, it isn't great. And it's being reworked, I believe the DOE is in contract with another company. Experis? Someone will correct me. It's a Milwaukee-based company, I don't know why they can't use New York City-based company, but that's not my thing. They're developing a new program, and the DOE is, it's going to be pre-K through 12, but you know, the work we do as a city, and the focus of this committee, for example, has been recognizing CUNY isn't just CUNY. CUNY is what happens before, during, and after. That's why we're talking about workforce development, that's why we're talking about how we're integrating with high schools. It's why we're talking about all these things. And so that's a really important role for MOPED to be involved in. Right, because the DOE is going to focus on, you would be, you're sort of, you're, you're mayor's office for the people, right? Not just students, but people with disabilities. Have, has the mayor's, has MOPED had any involvement with the Department of Education and their development and purchase of the new system designed for students with IEPs in, in pre-K through 12?
So I'm not aware of any.
Wait, timeout, microphone.
Emily Sweet, MOPD, I'm not aware of any involvement, but we could find out, and I can't confirm that, but I'm not aware of any involvement with that.
Councilmember Brewer said she's sure the answer's no. And for the record, I agree with her. So now, my second question is, can you? And again, this is the importance of the bill, because the IEP isn't, is just for, you know, K through 12, but can be used for students at CUNY as documentation for accommodations. So can the, can MOPED work with DOE in the development of this system? And I'll speak to something specifically, one of the things they're looking at, and this is one of the challenges of students coming in, getting that documentation, is they don't have access to their own IEPs unless it's printed out for them and handed or mailed to them, and it's the same with parents. But there's going to be a parent-facing component. And as this is being developed, can, is your office able to say, you know what, maybe, after the approval of the student and the parent, perhaps there's a nonprofit, perhaps, it's the one that works with the District 25 schools. Perhaps CUNY, per the student and the parent's approval, also maybe have access to the IEP so that it, so that the outreach, not only can the outreach happen, but that when the student has that conversation, has that personal touch, they don't have to go through extra steps to get a document that belongs to them to begin with and speaks to their personal needs, that that can be transmitted directly in, in whatever form the student chooses, can be transmitted directly to CUNY, so we don't, they don't have to go through this whole process, and they can just get what they need. Is that something that your office can commit to coordinating? As this, before even the legislation gets through, this software is being developed now. Can we, can we do that?
So I can't commit to that at this time, but certainly any policy that, that makes sense and is going to, and is in the control of a city agency, you know, we would, we would advocate for that as the mayor's office for people with disabilities.
Well, so it makes sense, so can you just say yes?
I think, I, I, honestly, I actually am not completely following exactly all the details, but it's something that we can look at. And, you know, we do advocate for policies to be followed by city agencies that, that, that help people with disabilities.
What I think what I'm saying is, is your office is for all people? And I think you would, people with disabilities, rather, no matter the age. And I would think your office, your agency specifically, would have a vested interest in making the lives of students with disabilities easier and recognizing that their disability doesn't end at 12th grade. And you have an incredible opportunity, as a system is being built from the ground up, to get in on the ground floor and ensure that the students are supported beyond 12th grade, that you're doing everything you can to provide that coordination, which is what this bill, bill speaks to. And I understand you're unable to answer, but I, I do think it's, I, I would hope that you'd bring that back to, to the, as an agency of the city, that's, I think, responsible for advocating for all people with disabilities, that you talk to other agencies like the Department of Education and like CUNY to help students with disabilities. And I, I have no doubt that you're going to see the students requesting or eligible for accommodations increase. No doubt that you're going to see an increase in retention and graduation rates for students with disabilities. And especially, you're, you're going to find fewer students saying, thank God, I have a friend who walked me through the process. And more students saying, thank God, I have a city that works for me. I know there were questions about resources, and I have one other quest, I think it's one other question. Is, are federal funds available, or do you apply for federal funds to help pay for or reimburse you, whether it's Medicaid reimbursements or anything like that, for the accommodations that you provide and are legally required to provide, and, you know, morally should provide? Federal fund, federal reimbursement, is any of that available to CUNY?
I can't speak on CUNY, but being on a campus, there's no federal funds that we receive specifically or reimbursed or billed for. We, state funds, when we talk about reader's aid and things of that nature, but that's state, not federal.
I'm not aware of any, we'll check, but I'm not aware of any.
Okay, and because I think.
Yeah, that's state, everything that we've, we, 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 we are able to bill for, it's state or, or request funding at state.
Okay, and there's no, all right, I'll, I'll leave it there, but I know you'll get back to me. It is something that I've certainly brought up with a chance, so I know that, that he's looking into it, but I guess individual campuses, but you should, would definitely love.
Mr. Chair, can they bill Medicaid?
Well, that was sort of, sort of my question, but it, they don't. But I'm asking if you could look into that, because our public schools, K-12, we do get Medicaid reimbursements as a centralized system, and I'm, it's unclear to me why CUNY can't, especially as we're, we're talking about funding. And it sounds like you're talking about $100,000 for a program that really deeply and positively impacts students, as an example. And I love that you laid out the bullet points. Do you want to? No, you're welcome to.
No, I was just gonna say, we all know that the health centers, I mean, I don't need, in the DOE, bill Medicaid, blah, blah, blah. In other words, if, sometimes the parents don't want to do it, that's a different story. But if, if.
But it's available there, and this was.
Absolutely, I've been to every health center in Manhattan in a school, and they bill. And, you know, it doesn't solve all their problems, there are certain things that aren't eligible, but they bill. It would seem to me, thanks to the chair, it would be eligible to do so.
Try it, see what happens.
You never know.
See what happens. I want to turn, apologies, I want to turn it over to Chair Lee.
Sorry, just two real quick questions. So we talked about, obviously, the engagement with students. And, you know, I think Councilmember Williams illustrated it really well about the peer-to-peer, but then also, you know, the suggestion of maybe including something or emphasizing it more so during orientation. But just out of curiosity, what has the engagement been, if at all, with, I guess, the parents or the guardians before they come into the schools? Because oftentimes, you know, the parents or guardians may, you know, help in, in the forms and the financials and all of that. And so how, how has the engagement been on that, that side of things?
So regularly, parents or transition coordinators will reach out and ask specifically about programs that we have. And, you know, we connect them to the campuses. You know, generally, we try to start with a conversation around a student major interest, and then direct accordingly, and then help them connect with the accommodations office at that campus. But I would say, you know, regularly, we receive inquiries by email and by phone where people are trying to figure out what's the right fit for their, their person.
Got it, okay. Yeah, because I was just thinking in the case of, you know, certain students who, like Councilmember Hanif mentioned, you know, may be a bit more on the shy side and advocating for themselves, you know, especially parents, hopefully, they would advocate and get involved in well. Also, for Deputy Commissioner, just out of curiosity, do you know by any chance how the, the MOPED commissioner's opinion is on the bill for Intro 660?
I think that, as I said, this isn't, this is not an issue that we've been engaged in. So we really are not in a position at this time to comment on the actual program design. But it's, you know, we're, we're being educated today on this. And the commissioner herself is, would be happy to speak with the committee at a later date.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just a quick check, is Kalie Wilkerson here? Okay, and is Michael? I don't have a last name, it's Michael? So if anybody here who wants to testify before we go to Zoom, please fill out a slip at the desk in the front. I, I want to say one other thing about the bill, and it's, it's, and you appreciate, to appreciate the relationships you've built with counselors, with teachers, with, with different schools around, around your campus or around the city. And that's always important, and I don't want to take away from that work. But I also know, having done this work, that transition, there, there are transition coordinators and counselors who are, you know, thrown into this position without, in, in the high schools, without any time, without any extra compensation, time is really the big one, and are not given the support. And I just think that the teachers are not given the support they need, and a lot of times, the councils aren't. And it's, it's not a you thing, but I'm just explaining that the students miss out, the students lose out. And I just think we have an opportunity here to, you know, take a, a little bit, a little bit off of the, off of the, off of the workload of the teachers and the social workers who are already like overburdened with, with jobs they, they never thought they'd have to do. You know, we didn't talk about any of the other challenges our CUNY students and high school students face, but we all know them, we've heard them from hearing to hearing, way outside the classroom. And this is, again, this bill's really an opportunity to provide more for more of our students without, without continuing to overburden our educators, who particularly during the pandemic have, have done so much for our students going through what is probably the hardest time in their life and maybe the hardest time they'll ever have to go through. I'd like to, do any, any, any other councilmembers have any last questions before I close out the panel? I would like to thank you all for coming. I, I look forward to talking more and working more on behalf of students with disabilities and working more on this legislation to make sure that they have every opportunity to succeed and that you have the information you need to provide them with what, what they deserve. Thank you, CUNY, and thank you, MOPED.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now call up the first in-person panel. It's Kalie Wilkerson. I apologize, Kalie Wilkerson. Hi, Kalie, you have three minutes to testify, and you may begin when you're ready.
Okay, hi, so I'm actually a college student attending Borough of Manhattan Community College. I'm actually 20, so this is like my first year in person. Online didn't work out for me, so I did take a gap year, and that was actually very hard for me, considering the fact that early on in my childhood, I was diagnosed with ADHD. And I've been like trying to work out how to deal with having ADHD in college. And I've been, like, trying to work out how to deal with having ADHD in college, because apparently I didn't know that it does not follow me from, you know, early on in childhood to college, and nobody actually told me that during orientation. And I wish they did, because then I would have ended up, you know, getting my accommodations that I was supposed to, but nobody told me. And that's pretty much all I have to say, but I do wish that somebody would kind of, like, also advocate for the students as well, kind of just, like, meet us halfway here, because there are some kids, like me, I don't know, I don't even know where is the office in the school. And I don't think there's really much marketing and advertisement for the mental disabilities and stuff, so I kind of wish that we had some sort of meeting halfway point there for, between the staff and the students.
Thank you. Kalie, thank you so much. I first want to say the same thing as I said to my colleagues. I think you just coming up here and expressing that you have ADHD, you said, is incredibly powerful, and I think is incredibly impactful to, you know, some of your colleagues, friends, peers, who may, who may be in a position where, you know, they don't want to, they don't want to share, and they're now going to be more comfortable because you're, you're sharing. So let me ask you, if you're, let's pretend that there were a system where CUNY knew from your high school that you had, I assume it was IEP?
Yeah.
That you had an IEP, and they reached out to you, you know, during orientation, during whether, when maybe you were doing CUNY Start or Math Start, or maybe just first day of classes, do you think you would have been helped by that?
I do definitely think I would have been helped if somebody also approached me and said, "Hey, we also have these accommodations. If you need these sort of accommodations, we can help you with that. If not, then that's fine, too."
Yeah. See? She agrees. Do other council, before I go on, do other councilmembers have any questions?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
No, just saying that I understand, because I was in the same boat, and I was not diagnosed when I was younger. It's something that I struggle with as an adult, ADHD, and I didn't really know how it impacted my ability to really, like, focus and accomplish my tasks, so I just wanted to share my solidarity with you as you were trying to further your education and not really having resources to support you in your education and not knowing where to go, which is even more frustrating for a college student. So thank you for sharing and testifying with us today.
Have you since gone to the Office of People with Disabilities?
No, I don't know where that is. I'm sure it's in the main building, but I don't know where that is.
Well, it's different school, you said BMCC?
Yeah.
So it's even a different school, but I think that kind of speaks to the point that I was speaking about, and I know you're not in the panel anymore, but I'm addressing CUNY, which is that the important role of Central, I mean, right here, I thank you so much for testifying, this is exactly what I'm talking about. It is, it is not easy to find it, and Central has a role and an opportunity to provide directions and directives, rather, and best practices to each individual campus. So it's right there, so people can, can find it easily, and of course, as Kalie mentioned, like, that outreach. So I am positive that these very fine people from CUNY will help you locate the office so you can get the, the support that you need. One other question I have that I'm interested in, you said that you took a gap year because of online learning?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, also, I think a lot of people, especially the ADHD, find online learning very challenging. And I would imagine it's kind of hard for a professor to notice what you look like in the virtual classroom, meaning notice, I guess if you're in the classroom and you appear to be struggling, if you're physically there, it may be easier for a professor to notice. But on Zoom, I imagine, like, you could just easily turn your camera off if you don't want to be seen, is that, was that kind of your experience?
So my experience was, I actually had night classes, so that was also very rough for me, since that was, like, the only thing that was available for me, and I just needed to get, like, that class, and I needed that credit. So there were times where I would be, just turn off my camera, and I would just, like, kind of be somewhere else, or I'd be on my phone, or I'd just so happen to fall asleep in class. But me being in person, there's the opportunity where I'm sitting in front of the class, and I'm learning, and I'm experiencing, like, talking face-to-face with my professor, and I'm not falling asleep in class, or I'm actually engaging, because it's better for me, and I feel like that's the best way that I'm able to learn.
Yeah, or if you are struggling in class, a professor can, you know, he or she will see you on their, on your phone, or see you falling asleep. And I just, and I kind of want to make sure CUNY hears that, as much as we celebrate the online learning and the things it can do for people with autoimmune diseases and physical disabilities that can't get physically to a place, there are also the other limitations, especially with those, again, those invisible disabilities that, that we don't always talk about. But I think, again, CUNY Central's role in recognizing that is vital here. Kalie, is there anything else you'd like to share with us?
No, but I would definitely love to learn about, like, what my accommodations would be, because back in high school, I was getting, like, extra time on quizzes and stuff like that. And I do also believe that, because I recently took a midterm, and it was a timed midterm. It was three hours, and I had late classes that night, and I didn't start my quiz until eight o'clock at night.
Yeah.
So I did not get to finish, I did not answer all the questions, and somehow I made it and got a 75.
All right. Well, Kalie, you are a, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you coming here, waiting through the hearing, and then testifying, really, like, bearing your soul here and your needs, I think it's really powerful. And I am, like I said, as soon as you get up, you go right, right to the top. All right? No one else has a question? Kalie, thank you so much, I really appreciate it. Go see CUNY, they're going to help you right now. We will now move to the remote testimony.
Yes. Unless there's anyone in the room who has submitted a witness slip or has not, please do now. Okay, thank you. We will now move to the remote testimony. You will have three minutes to testify each. As a reminder, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and you may begin once the sergeant-at-arm sets the clock and queues you. Our first panel will be Giovanni Love, Juliet Eisenstein, Kayla Williams, and Christopher Schuyler. Giovanni, you may begin when the sergeant queues you.
Time has begun.
Yeah, first of all, I'm letting you know that I have two superpowers. I have ADHD, and I'm also autistic. I didn't go to college because of, insert sad childhood story here. So I started in August of 2020. And when I transferred to BMCC, I had such a difficult time, and I actually had paperwork with my disabilities on it that I happened to get because of a scholarship I was given to get extensive testing. One of the main things that I would advocate for is the lack of testing. I come from a poor background, and without that scholarship, I wouldn't have gotten my testing done and wouldn't have received help. And when I was applying to BMCC, it was so difficult that I nearly gave up, including dropping out of the winter semester that I was enrolled in 2021, because I was just free-falling, and that doesn't work for me. Daphne, I want to give a shout-out to her, because without her literally calling me on the phone and talking me out of quitting, I would have. And I'm an adult, and that left me just horrified about what kids are doing, because I at least have some ability to speak up for myself, but I know, like, even being on online classes, kids don't even have that ability to speak up for themselves because of all the insecurity that goes with being young. And right now, I'm grateful for the online classes, because I'm actually in Nevada, taking care of my mother who's mentally ill, which is a whole nother challenge, because being autistic, you know, I have a hard time functioning in the world sometimes, and so I'm grateful for those online classes. I still don't think I'm getting the full spectrum of what I could be getting from services at BMCC, and I plan to transfer to John Jay with the hope of eventually getting into law school. I was actually missing my pre-law society group today to attend this event through my political science class, and I'm so glad I did, because I have to agree 100% with Councilmember Charles Borrow, who said, "None of this means anything unless you fund it." And everybody loves kids.
Time has expired?
Sorry.
You can take, you can take another few seconds to finish that thought.
Thank you. They, they talk about the future and mental health care and how important all of this is, until it comes time to allocate the funds. That's all I have to say. We need those funds.
I thank you again for, I'm sorry. Oh. You know, I want to thank you for testifying. I can also say, I'm glad you didn't give up either, because I think your testimony is very powerful. And again, anyone watching this, you know, you mentioned kids may be a little apprehensive about, you know, self-identifying with a disability, but, you know, the more and more people who speak up and speak out of forums like this and say, "I have a disability, and I'm doing great, I'm getting help, or I need more help," is really powerful and going to help a lot of, a lot of kids and a lot of people, so thank you. Our next speaker.
No, I was just going to say thank you again so much for sharing, and the funding part is something that we're always advocating for, because one of the things I would get frustrated about all the time when I was a nonprofit executive was that, you know, we had to always, we were, there was more demanded of us, but with not, with no funding to, to actually implement a lot of the things that we needed, so I appreciate your comments on that, too, and we'll definitely try to fight for that as well. Thank you.
Our next panelist will be Juliet Eisenstein. You may begin when the sergeant queues you.
Time has begun.
Thank you for the chance to testify today. My name is Juliet Eisenstein, and I am a staff attorney on Advocates for Children of New York's Post-Secondary Readiness Project. We're here today to testify in support of Intro 660, which would establish a program to provide transition services for students with disabilities entering higher education. Students with disabilities, as many have already said, often face obstacles to getting the accommodations and supports they need in college. While in high school, IEP teams are required to meet annually at a minimum to create appropriate programming for students with disabilities. In college, the burden of responsibility shifts to the student to disclose that they have a disability and request accommodations. Often, students must advocate for the supports they need. I've seen firsthand how difficult this transition can be for students with disabilities. Even the strongest of self-advocates, many of whom we've heard from today, can struggle to figure out who to turn to in order to get the accommodations they need to succeed in college. I recently worked with a student who had special education and supports in place throughout high school, and when she started college, those accommodations abruptly ended, and she didn't know where to turn to for help. The program established by Intro 660 would help such students enter institutions of higher education with the necessary accommodations already in place. It would help ensure students know how to obtain their accommodations and would allow them to consent to having the DOE share their disability status with the college they'll be attending. We're also encouraged by the incorporation of student advocates in this bill, which allows students with disabilities entering college to see and feel that they have student allies they can turn to as they navigate new and often difficult experiences. While we support Intro 660, we want to ensure the mayor's office for people with disabilities, which would be tasked with implementation, takes full advantage of existing infrastructures. In the past several years, the New York City Department of Education has opened Transition and College Access Centers, or TCACS, in each borough, which are specifically tasked with helping students with disabilities in New York City transition into post-secondary life. These centers, which have relationships with high schools across the city and conduct outreach to high school students with disabilities and their families, are not widely known by the general public. And yet, given their access to information and their staff's knowledge of special education, they can play an integral role in facilitating students with disabilities' transitions from high school to college. While the bill tasks the mayor's office for people with disabilities to consult with the DOE, we recommend that the bill specify the need for consultation and collaboration with TCACS to get the initiatives proposed in Intro 660 up and running. In addition, we recommend that the website and other outreach strategies required by the bill specifically include information about the services provided by the TCACS. We look forward to working with you to ensure students with disabilities have the support they need to thrive after they leave high school. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Can you repeat the transition centers? The name of it?
Yeah. Yes, they're called Transition and College Access Centers, or TCACS, so T-C-A-C-S is how they're usually referred to by the DOE.
Thank you. You know, we love acronyms here in the city.
Yes.
I thought after CUNY and moped left, we were done with acronyms, but I guess not. Okay, could call the, thank you very much. Can we call the next witness, please?
Our next witness will be Kayla Williams. You may begin when the sergeant queues you.
Time has begun.
Good afternoon. My name is Kayla Williams. I am a sophomore at Gutman Community College and an alum of Young Invictus Young Advocacy Program. Young Advocacy is a national nonprofit organization committed to amplifying the voices of young adults ages 18 to 34 and expanding economic opportunity for generations. I just want to take a moment to thank the council for hearing me today. First of all, the disability that I have is cerebral palsy. It makes things difficult with my motor systems, it's directed on my right side, and I've gotten all types of therapy, physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy. The help sort of died when I transferred to higher education, and the most thing that I'm probably concerned about is being penalized for being late to class. That's something that I really struggled with in my first year, because the MTA system isn't really always reliable. But when I took the Office of Accessibility at my school, they kind of just gave me an accessory application, but it wasn't really helpful. I was wondering if the Office of Accessibilitys could be more open-minded and give more accommodations to people with physical disabilities, not just extra time and cater to more with learning disabilities. Having access to the elevator is nice, but I would like to also have windows of open time, so if I'm late for class, I won't be penalized, or if I'm going to my next class, I have, like, a five-minute slot of getting there earlier and leaving class. So that's what I'm most concerned about, transportation.
Thank you. Can you remind us what school you said you go to?
Gutman Community College.
Thank you so much, Kayla, for sharing. I just wanted to say, I really appreciate you staying on to testify and waiting this long, so thank you very much. And coming from a neighborhood in Queens where it is a transit desert, I hear from families all the time how much of a struggle it is to get to and from school for their children, and it impacts the whole family. So I appreciate everything that you shared, and just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say thank you as well, and for those who are watching at home, CUNY Central is still here taking notes, and so, you know, they are hearing your story, and when they're hearing your story, you represent thousands and thousands of students who, who aren't here. So it's very powerful, and I thank you for, for coming out and testifying today. Can we call the next witness, please?
Our last panelist will be Christopher Schuyler. You may begin when the sergeant queues you.
Time has begun.
Time has begun.
Good, 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 good afternoon. Chair Dinowitz, Chair Lee, council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify today. I am, my name is Christopher Schuyler. I'm a senior staff attorney with the Disability Justice Program at New York Lawyers for the Public Interest. And I am a person who stutters, which is, which is one of the invisible disabilities that we've heard from or heard about today. And in many cases, I may have benefited had, had I had, had I had more resources and knowledge of what accommodations were available to me when I was in school. So this bill is very, is very, is very relevant to me and very important. But my, my organization, New York Lawyers for the Public Interest, is, is very kind of keyed into, into education access issues. We've helped, helped student, helped college students in securing accommodations and going through appeals, appeals processes when they've been denied. We're also quite active in, in licensing, in higher education, licensing exams, accommodations. So we, so we definitely care about this bill quite a bit. So we, so we ultimately are in support of the bill and we think it's a great idea for, for MOPED to, to establish a system of sharing between colleges and students' information and to also set up student advocates and the annual report. We like all of that. And, you know, we, you know, as the committee report points out, that college students who with disabilities are kind of largely left on their own to seek accommodations. And so, and so this is, these are very important changes. You know, it can be very dizzying to, for, for college students and submitting all the paperwork and the appointments and the follow-ups. And then, God forbid, they're, they are denied, they have to go through appeals processes. And it's, it's also extremely stressful and, and very high stakes. So we recently helped a student appeal a denial where she had, had, had medical reasons for needing to continue remote work and her school denied her request initially. And after an appeals process, yeah, that was kind of long, long drawn out, the school granted it. But, you know, they need to be granted more quickly and more easily. And so, you know, more students with disabilities in the classroom are important for increased diversity. Disability is a disability, is a, is a diversity metric that's often sort of under, underrepresented, underappreciated. You know, more diversity in the classroom will, will also, maybe I can have another moment to finish up.
Yeah, please continue.
Thank you. And so just, people with disabilities are traditionally underrepresented in higher education and later in the workplace. And so having more, having more people with disabilities actually in school will increase diversity and representation, both in classrooms and later on, including and maybe especially for, for people with disabilities also belonging to, to, to minority groups. So we, so just as a couple suggestions to finish up is that MOPED should push, should push schools to simplify request processes and remove any barriers, clarify their handbooks and clear, and clarify their appeals processes. MOPED should meet regularly with stakeholders and disability advocates, like, like my organization. The annual reports should include information about denials, of course, maintaining anonymity. MOPED should interface with state protection and advocacy offices to benefit with their, benefit from their experiences. And with respect to COVID-related accommodations, including remote schooling, requests should be more freely granted when, when needed. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
No, I just wanted to say I'm a big fan of NLP, so thanks for all that you do. Another acronym, NLP, sorry.
There you go.
We have a scorecard in the back. How many acronyms have been said today?
Thank you.
I'm glad to have the last word on acronyms.
Thank you. We'll move to our next panel, which will be Amima Wasim and Ellen McHugh, if they are on Zoom. Looks like they're not. So if there is anyone present in the room or on Zoom that has not had the opportunity to testify, they can raise their hand. Thank you, seeing no one else. I would like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nycity.gov. Chair Lee and Chair Dinowitz, we have concluded public testimony for this hearing.
So I guess I'll go first. Closing statement?
Ladies.
Oh, ladies, okay. No, I'll, I'll be, I'll be very brief. No, I just wanted to really say thank you, especially, you know, as Chair Dinowitz said, I don't know if you guys can see on the Zoom, but the CUNY staff are still here, which I think is to their credit. And I really appreciate the fact that you guys stuck around to listen to the testimonies. And for those of you who are on Zoom or are hearing this testimony afterwards, I really would encourage folks, even who weren't able to attend, to submit their testimonies because getting as much feedback as possible will help us to improve and better the bill as well as any accommodations or systems that need to be, changes that need to be made. So just want to say thank you. And then also especially to our committee staff who have very, very related experience in this area, which I sincerely appreciate because it makes for a stronger committee hearing. So I just wanted to thank Sarah Sutra, who's sitting right here, as well as Christie Dwyer, who's over there in the corner. But their expertise also that they bring to the table is, is amazing. And so I just wanted to thank them.
I'd also like to thank Regina to my left. She's my policy analyst. So I want to, I want to thank CUNY and MOPED and especially the, the students who testified or have or will submit written testimony. You know, it's, it's clear that there are good intentions CUNY has and there are programs that exist and that good things are happening. But it's also clear that not enough is being done, that students don't know where to turn or even when, sometimes when they do turn there, they're not getting the services that these, that, that they deserve. So there is work for CUNY Central to do, to provide more resources and directives directly to the campuses that are the ones providing the services or should be providing the services to students. They've heard some examples, or I shared some examples today of what that looks like. You heard some examples from students of what is and is not being done. And you have an incredible opportunity to really provide for the very students who probably need the most help in our system. And I also want to reiterate the importance of Bill 660, of Introduction 660, that we have an opportunity here for our government to actually work for our students with disabilities and to recognize that DOE is not in a silo, CUNY is not in a silo. And once they graduate CUNY, they're going off into the world and we can work together to make sure that information is shared so that CUNY has the information and the resources to reach out to our students who they already know have disabilities and already will ideally have the documentation so that those accommodation and those supports can be provided before those students even step on campus. I want to thank everyone again, everyone of my colleagues, Chair Lee, everyone on staff. And this committee, this hearing is adjourned.